Are we good? Are we going?
Who cares?
Hold on. I don't know. Just let me start this one, just in case.
Good? Okay, welcome, welcome to the regular meeting of the BEPO planning board. Today is Wednesday, March 27th, 2024. This meeting is scheduled for 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We would need a majority vote of the planning board to go beyond 8 o'clock. With that in mind, we have two items on the agenda to consider this evening. Under "old business," we need to review the site plan for community concepts daycare. And under "new business," we have a minor site plan amendment for 44 Mayville Road. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind everyone that all questions need to go through the chair. Okay, so we can, um, oh, that's my opening statement. We have a quorum. So, we're gonna be able to sign the sidewalk from January 5th?
It's not, it's of the members that were present, not the whole board. Because that's why we have to, we had to take care of everything.
I have no idea.
Because every time one of us has been missing, out of any of those four, so we haven't.
I recommend that you go ahead and approve it, but who's attending, and then see if anybody raises anything? Okay, let's do that, then. So could I get, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk at Uplastation from January 5th, 24.
Do I have a moment?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, so hold on. Bob, Sherry, and Jim, all other abstaining, thank you.
Okay. And then we have another set of minutes to approve from the regular meeting on March 13th. So anyone had an opportunity to review these?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve March 13th's minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Oh, I can't vote. Wait a minute.
No, I can't vote.
Yeah, I was.
I was absent on 13th?
It was unanimous with Peter. Peter was the only one that was lucky.
What, I had February 14th minutes.
Oh, I didn't vote that.
This is March 13th.
This is March 13th.
Oh, weird.
Wait a minute. These are seven minutes.
Did I put the wrong ones?
I have no, no.
I got it, I got it, I got it. I was there, so I'm voting yes, present. I was here. God almighty, okay.
Do I get a second on that?
Yep.
Okay, all, all in, all in favor? Okay.
It's Jim's fault.
All right. So, Shane, you want to, um, get us started on this? Thank you for coming up early for the sidewalk.
No problem at all.
And, uh, do we have, I know, we found, we found standing, right, the last time, but not a complete application?
Because we didn't have the landscaping plan, and then waiting for lighting.
Wrong, we did stand.
Hold on. I know, I left that at home. That is stupid.
Would you like to use part of the locker?
Why would you, Daddy?
Who was that on? Okay, so, um, right, so we, did you bring us that, the landscaping plan?
Yes.
If that's that?
So that's the landscaping plan, and today I received the lighting plan.
Oh.
I have two full-size copies I can give to the board.
You know what, just, just spread them out, or.
If I may, I also have it, it's really hard to see the numbers and whatnot. I guess if you could explain again what I'm, what I'm looking at.
I know. Well, at least according to.
I can't imagine.
I thought we did stand.
You did standing.
It just wasn't in, just.
You did stand.
Too bad. Okay, and now we have the lighting plan, so I'd like to entertain a motion to find this application complete.
I'll make a motion that we find the application completed with the addition of the landscaping plan and lighting plan.
So.
All in favor?
I need a second.
Yeah.
Oh, I need a second. Thank you.
Okay. So go right ahead, Shane.
Sure, I guess I am on camera, so I'm Shane with May and I'm a development consultant. I'll just do a walkthrough of the two plans that we revised and created since last meeting. So this is the vegetation plan. All the areas in green will be allowed to revegetate. We were out there today, most of it was already cut previously. I'd like to highlight, these are the two houses that we saw out on site. And this green area here along the property boundary will be allowed to revegetate. And something that was kind of hard to see, if you weren't looking for it before, was there is a proposed privacy fence along that property line as well, that'll be tall enough to obstruct the view from these residences to the building at that.
You need to be able to identify on the landscaping plan the height, with a note, a height materials of a privacy fence. Because I think that that's how we pulled everybody apart.
Yeah, we have, right.
It's not noted on the plan, but cedar fencing is what John and I have worked out, and approximately 10 feet high.
Okay, so we will have to put that as a condition.
The height may vary depending on what finding of fact you're at, but at least, at least 10 feet.
That's a tall fence.
That's a very.
It is a little bit.
Yeah.
It's about, it's about as high as like, yeah, the fences around a basketball court, the chain of fences, if you can imagine that.
It's going to be chain link fence or cedar?
Cedar, yes, cedar is very hard.
So, um, now, the area in white has a note, I'm struggling to read it. It says all other, uh, no, new paved area, areas shown in green. Other areas will be, will, which will be disturbed but not paved and or forested, will be loaned and ceded to prevent erosion.
Okay, so just point out where the loan and seed piece was, because we were a little concerned that around the building in particular.
Yes, so all of these other areas, the white, at least on the property itself, that will all be disturbed, so that'll be loaned and ceded for erosion, just probably grass is what that would be, maintained as such. Particularly over the subject system, because that's.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions about, oh, the lighting plan we haven't seen yet, the landscaping plan?
Before we go into that.
I think it looks good.
I know what, I know what Shane told me, but I just want to bring it up, that there's nothing on here with the playground surface is going to be.
It's usually wood chips. John spoke to that last time.
Okay, I don't remember that.
Is it on here?
No, it's not on here.
Yeah, typically for playgrounds, we don't, I'm not a playground engineer, so I'll leave that up to them, but we, I did box out the area, at least that would be the playground, so.
Okay, having previously worked for Head Start, they're always, a wood chip approved, interred.
Okay. Any other questions about the landscaping plan?
One other thing I think you ought to put on the conditions that he doesn't have is a right of way. Right now, he doesn't have a right of way up in there.
We don't, we don't have a current, we have verbal approval between John and the abutting property owner. But they don't, at least to my knowledge, they don't have the, the documents to back that up at the moment. They may, but I don't have that. And, and.
We can see that, sorry, green on green.
But, um, there's, there's a right of way that we created along the Access Drive, which the abutting property owner will use as well.
That needs to be in the package.
It was on the site. I thought something was.
Where is it? I, I didn't find it, but that's, maybe I just sold it.
But, uh, I think Lori had a plan.
It's got to be in a written, on a B.
We can just make it a condition of approval.
That's right, that's right.
You struggling with those?
Yes.
They're clearly going to get that, so we could, I have a leader, whatever that comes up. If I didn't already, of course, I left my.
Do you want my packet? Do you need anything?
No, we're just going to see.
Do you need anything? Well, I thought I have a site plan. I pulled them up, sure, though.
Yeah, they may have read it on here. That doesn't mean that they have.
This is one in my packet. Or do you have the deed, you must have the deed in it?
Sherry, what does that mean?
Oh, will you go get it? I've got everything.
Hey, it is on there. Also granting a 50-foot easement extending to US Route 2 for any and all purposes, and including the right to install any utilities.
Is that a legal paper that's?
Yes, the deed.
That's.
Yeah.
Which one is that?
I thought I.
That is in section three. The last page of the.
I've got all the big plans rolled up in my car. Should I go get those?
No, because the only one we have, that's a, that's on the deed, but not a note on the site plan, is what you're saying.
Oh. I do have a note somewhere.
I couldn't find it. I've been pulling up all the.
You have this.
It may not have called out the width of it or some, or like.
Point it down.
Is it on this?
Yeah.
Is it on?
It's on the deed.
It's on the deed. I mean, I.
It's on the deed. By other than, other than having it on, there's a good form of showing.
So I don't actually have a note that calls it out, like with a leader and everything, but there's a line type there, it's a little dash with a dot. Over here, do, um, grading easement or access easement.
Okay.
Can you, is something like, please note deed on there, and? I mean, it's in here.
Yeah, but it's not on there.
Can you write it in there? And then we sign it, or does it have to be printed?
I think if we make a note in our findings of that somewhere.
I agree, we'll have to come back, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's in the deed. The deed is going to trip back to the hills.
No, I was trying to find, and it should have been on, it should have been on the road section. I was trying to find site way. No, because normally there's site distance in the road entrance. I can't find it, and it's on the front.
Also granted.
What are you looking for, Jane?
Just wanted to see what.
Normally we have the site distance.
Do you want me to tell you what it is?
Well, it usually comes from the MDOT.
Yeah, and I didn't, I couldn't find it in the permit.
Because we just got it.
Okay, so the permit that's in here is not a legitimate permit. That's not the right. That's, that's why, I mean, that's not the right word.
This came in last weekend, Dave.
Okay.
And I have a hard copy here as well.
So we need to read those into.
Um, yes, we can. We haven't gotten there.
Okay.
We'll, we'll.
Sorry for jumping.
Do it after the, uh, landing.
So we're ready?
We're ready. I think we're ready.
Sure, I can, look at the lighting plan. And so the. The town has a standard.
Oh, boy.
It's, it's hard to see, even, that's close. Um, the town does have a standard for a minimum of 1.5-foot candles in paved and walkway areas. There's, this plan highlighted that there's a couple areas where we're a little bit short of that within the parking area, which John is aware of, and he's thinking of adjusting some of the lighting up front to better cover that area and still be within compliance with the lighting fixture standards, which is cut off and shielded from view from other properties, so. We'll need to adjust, um, yeah, the lighting fixtures up front a little bit. So there's a porch right up front, and those are completely downcast, and they don't spread out very much. So it might, might necessitate maybe another, another wall mounted fixture somewhere, somewhere front.
Okay.
So when we get to that section of the finding of that, we'll have to state something.
Right, yeah.
That lighting, like lighting needs a little bit more configuration, I think.
Right.
Will require her to make sure the lighting conforms to the 1.5-foot, right, that standard. And on the drive, is there any lighting?
Yes, there are. There are utility poles running up the drive, and we're proposing three utility pole-mounted lights, one close to the entrance, one about halfway. You want to apply the hammerhead?
I think that's, oh, that's good.
So that the intersection here will be relatively illuminated. Not blasting out into the street, but just highlighted.
How does that work when you don't have a pole in the property?
They have a utility easement in there.
Yep, and the utility poles are located within that easement. And I think the deed references access and utilities.
And those will all be downcast?
Correct.
Or will they be more like? Will they be more like streetlights?
I think more like streetlights. I know that they have a specific fixture, but probably something more like that.
The reason I'm asking that is, I'm thinking about, too, the, um, thing that's on the pole, that MDT, and how bright that is, and.
It's very bright.
Just to, I mean, so those.
It would annoy a neighbor, definitely.
So, I mean, you know, is the standard that they have to be the 1.5?
I don't.
I don't have my.
I don't know.
I'm, I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to look that up, and I can't remember what it is, you know, it'd be quicker waiting to sort out on the.
Courtney will find it.
It'll be lighting of all parking areas, walkways, it's parking areas and walkways. And that's not really a.
Uh, maximum, it says a maximum of five-foot candles. There shall be a lighting of all parkways, walkways, and other such areas.
I knew it had to be different than 1.5.
For use after dark, uh, and maximum of five-foot candles.
Okay.
Exit. With a minimum of one.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any more questions, Shane, about the lighting plan?
I have a couple things.
Okay, we're going to. Sure.
So I did hear for one about her. Not the house directly in front, the next one up the hill, the, the next one. That one, um, I believe she lives out of state. She was concerned about having a daycare in the backyard. I explained to her that if she had a specific standard in our ordinances that she was concerned they weren't going to meet, or was going to be an issue, then to email me or mail me something prior to tonight, and I have not heard back. She did get the email, because she responded to me a couple of times, um, I didn't hear back, so. Okay. And then can I ask to have the driveway permit from DOT read into the record or consider making a motion?
Yes, yes.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on, who seconded?
Lori?
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
I did not make copies for everybody. Do you want to pass it around, or?
Well, Jim wanted to look it up.
I have one additional copy as well.
Here's that one that.
It didn't specify private versus commercial on there, which was a question she had. I'm beginning to miss it.
You were looking for site distance?
Yeah, that was the biggest.
So that is 582. It's on this page?
Yeah, no, I was looking at another piece.
Uh, yeah, so it says that it was matched from 840 with 582. Um, I'm guessing it says above that, it says based on standards for driveway separation, reduced from 315 to 216. Oh, that's what it was. I guess probably previous. I'm not sure, I don't work for the. I don't know.
I'm just trying to find where it was. Yeah, this is. And there's double checking.
Does everybody have their findings of that? Because it was from the last meeting.
No, you know what I did? I left my packet from the last meeting. Um, I.
Someone else.
I have one copy. I can go make a couple of copies.
Does anyone else need a clap off?
Well, I don't need it, I can just.
I have a share. I have an extra.
It's going to go right back. So that list is a school. In the permit, too.
It is a school, it's a preschool.
Yeah, but we're talking about signage and stuff earlier, mentioning whether or not it needs a school zone sign.
Well, I, that's something I was going to bring up, and we talked about it, the sidewalk, but it's Route 2, and it's a state numbered highway, so we won't have any authority on that others to ask them for permission.
Right.
I think.
Question for DOT, if I understand correctly. Would that have come up? I've never been in that situation before, I wonder if that would come up in their review of these.
Well, it says right here that it's supposed to have, in accordance with sketch or tax plan, an entrance to school of 290, 200, 2,924 feet west from Raines Road. School, what's the definition of school? Anything that teaches.
But was this is what MDT designated for this?
Yeah, if they, if they categorized it as a school already.
Head Start is considered school.
Is it?
Yes, I mean, uh, in the sense of the preschool, there's a 4 to 5, it's the infant and toddler here.
Was there school zone signs on that road when they wrote that?
I have no idea.
I didn't think there was.
But it's a different kind of road to have it to block traffic. And people not expecting that they're, and they're climbing a hill.
Yeah.
One way and going down the other way, so.
I think it's a good, we'll talk about that when we get to it, but we'll think of something we can maybe, maybe add a sign. We can make that.
Four lane.
Four lane road running, sort of a flashing sign or something.
No, it just has to.
It's going to be flashing.
Or you can't, the state requires them to do flashing. They do it at other places.
I don't know.
No, or just a sign that's, what does that say?
A 20, you know, uh, school entrance in 20 feet or something. Caution, yeah.
Yeah.
For any traffic, yeah. The MDOT will know what the right thing is.
Okay, so we ready to go? Okay, so everyone, if their findings of that, on page one.
You'd have to.
You put the money of that, who would be?
You want us on page one?
Oh, Bob, you have it.
Huh?
You've got it.
I do, I do, I know I got them, but I didn't know if I brought them.
Okay, on page one. We have the pollutions, is everybody good? Page two.
The number five is the traffic thing, so we were going to.
Oh, we need to change something, because I put awaited.
Yeah. Take out awaited DOT entrance permits. This is, is this where we would put something about a sign?
I think so. Here on the additional.
Applicant required to show letter of communication to MDOT about appropriate cautionary signs.
I can't believe that DOT just gave a blanket okay, when. And you do your, your subdivisions and stuff like that, you have to look at your number of trips per day, and. Well, they, they. So you're going to have quite a lot of trips in and out of there a day, and. According to what Community Concepts sent in, they're going to do, uh, we don't know. They're not doing, they're under, they're saying they're going to see under 100.
Yeah.
Vehicles a day, which I don't see how that's possible.
They're going to have, what, 44 kids?
Kids, yeah.
44 kids and staff, a couple maybe siblings.
So 44 kids, that's going to be 88 trips, like in and out. Twice a day. Well, that's going to be.
That's the whole day.
But it's within the hour that you look.
And then you've got the staff, and then you've got, the vendors are going to be up there.
Yeah, I think it is. It usually does go by per hour.
It's at the peak hour. 42 hour, right, 42 vehicles in the peak hour, in the threshold.
Makes sense.
So, did you get what Lori said?
I'm saying that the applicant is required to correspond with MDOT about appropriate, um, entrance cautionary signs, I, um, for the public, for the traveling public. And communicate that back to this board.
Regarding caution.
Cautionary traffic signs about entrance.
Okay.
And exit.
Yeah, it'd be good to have it, so we get out it to the file.
I have a question on this permit.
Can I put DOT approved permit number, is that okay if I put that on there?
No, that's good to have.
So in one section, it says the entrance is 2,924 feet from Yanis. And then the second section says it's 100 feet west of Yanis Road. And then the third location, and the parcel description that says this is the 2,924.
Certainly not 100.
No.
And is that in a special section that's requiring to something else?
I'm guessing it's probably like my finding of facts, they just cut out in peace, and they probably just.
Well, they did a, do you see log mile at 10.58? Location says it's paved, says it's a daycare.
Maybe it's paved, right?
Oh, it's paved.
Uh, this room?
Yeah.
It will be paved, yeah.
I'm confused on understanding the DOT.
But they have an approved permit.
Do you have a, yeah, permit?
So it's, all right, so continuing.
Okay, so let's go with six sewage. Seven, eight, nine, 10, financial capacity.
I thought we said they were met at our last meeting. Yeah, they ended up getting a letter. I just.
TD Bank.
At that point.
A letter from TD Bank.
Okay, so put down net?
Net, yeah.
Then, uh, the next page.
We want to put a, a, a language in the reasons met because they.
Due to letter.
TD Bank and the statement of applying for federal and state grants. That was in the application.
Okay. Okay, on page three.
At the top, there's a typo, any bod award.
Kind of like that one.
You do.
Slay.
It's a great bod, right?
It's a great bod water. Anything else on here that we have to discuss? Stormwater, spaghetti lots? Everybody good with page three? Page four. No spaghetti lots, no lake. Hydrogen nut, adjoining municipalities. It's not a subdivision.
Can we talk about the subdivision in a second? So it's not a subdivision, but in theory it's continuity.
No.
Because.
Just retained.
There's two laws.
But the left side where the right of way goes is set for development.
That's fine.
But it's still two laws.
If they develop that in more than one law, they have to come up with something.
Then it comes to, yeah, they would have been split. So we're not, yeah, right, yes.
So, site plan subdivision, conformance, buffer strip.
We need a reason.
I think we have to put a change in the language. It, I think it is, uh, met, but is this the place we want to put our fencing information? In lieu of a buffer strip?
No, that, that, we're going to the.
Okay, another section?
Land Steven.
Okay.
Yeah, land Steven.
But we don't have, do we need a reason under conformance?
We could try to add. We could try to add one. Oh, it doesn't require, you have a, you had a, uh, application by rule for stormwater for D E P?
Correct.
Uh, and you've obtained that?
Correct, yes. A stormwater P V R is one of those that you don't take the documents, we didn't hear anything back, so, yeah.
Courtney, do you have that language?
Oh, yeah. Is this on page four?
Yeah.
Four.
Me.
And now five.
Now, five.
Really, you gotta repeat the reason on, on one. On site plan.
Okay, so here's where we write in something about the sign?
And say, see, see traffic standards that we put it in under, uh, number five.
Is that good?
You need to do number thirteen.
And that's what you settled.
Well, is this where we would put the, um,
Oh, I skipped the page.
The, the, um, no, I mean, I would put, where are you at?
Where are you at?
Thirteen on page five, whether this is where we put the fence?
Well, no, I think fencing would go under landscaping and screening.
Okay.
But five, thirteen is where if we wanna put, is there gonna be a stop sign coming out?
Um, we didn't propose one.
I can't imagine.
I think there ought to be one.
I think that would be number ten.
And, and the next.
Okay.
And, oh, roads and streets.
Right.
You need.
Yeah, sorry, roads and streets.
Stuff like.
So, is that gonna be a road?
No, right off.
Or just a private driveway?
Can we ask for a stop sign?
Huh?
Okay.
And we can add that if.
Under condition.
It says on code, it says.
Under roads and streets.
Yeah.
Number ten, that's where it talks about signs.
So are we all agreeing?
I just add that if you're going to have a stop sign, you need to think in the future that on private dri, or on driveways for businesses.
That's not a good thing.
Well, it's.
I feel like you're setting our precedents here, that if you're gonna have that, you have a stop sign, I know it's just a stop sign, but that means that every business in town that has a driveway.
I don't think.
Should have a stop sign.
It's, it's, dear, for another aspect is, if it's on private property, it's not enforceable by the county anyways.
Agreed. And it's on a state road on private property, it's not another town road.
My, my concern is, a stop sign if Napa coming out isn't doing anything. The traffic comes through, there's two lanes. You got four lanes of traffic moving at sixty-plus miles an hour. They don't slow down for that.
Do you think people aren't gonna stop turning onto the road?
I hope so.
I hope so, but I also.
Figure it out pretty fast.
Well, and I feel like Napa has two businesses and that's why they do have a stop sign.
Yes.
They have two businesses, this is your business one. I'm just saying if you stop the precedents.
Can we say something like, due to the fact that it's.
We can make certain questions on each application, I believe. I mean, that's not setting a precedence.
Well, I know, but if you do a sidewalk for one, you do a sidewalk for all. So if you do a stop sign for one, you do a stop sign for all.
There are some subdivisions that have stop signs.
Yeah.
But I believe those more likely will put up.
Pardon me.
By the.
Well, and there's subdivisions, so you have several parcels going down one road. This is one.
It's one business with.
Well, it's only one right now, but it's gonna be many.
But if there's more, then you could.
So when we come to that, somebody's gonna sit here and say, oh, I don't think there should be a stop sign there because you're setting a precedence. I don't think that's right.
You guys can do whatever you want, I'm just saying.
I think what Jim's trying to say is because of the number of trips is why he wants to see one and.
We all, every one of us is stupid at some point. We will drive out at some point. At least if something's there, hopefully people are gonna see it and think.
But I'd like to put in some language that says we're putting it there because.
I think you would have to use.
That it's a daycare and school facility.
I'm perfectly fine with that.
Cause all schools have a stop sign.
All schools have a stop sign. You have a stop sign coming down Crescent Park onto, onto.
You don't, onto the road.
There is a stop sign coming onto, onto Philbrook. I mean, not Philbrook, um, Crescent.
Mason.
It's from Crescent on to Mason, but it's on Crescent, that's a town road.
Just as qualify it.
I just, yes, qual, qualify.
Say it's a daycare slash school, so it's consistent.
The traffic.
I am too, and it is faster there.
You got four lanes. I'm sure John wouldn't argue with it.
I don't think, I think we're more concerned that we're gonna open a can of worms with all the other things, but I think if we qualify it. Cause I, thinking about all the schools, they do have, all have stop signs, so.
I mean, if that's the case, why does Telstar have them?
You guys need to figure out how you wanna.
I'm sounding scared, the high quality.
But just on the basis of the project being a school slash daycare, um, the applicant will be required to install a stop sign at the, um, end of the driveway and to warn people.
I agree, just, it is a, to me, it's a little bit of a scary place for all these cars, but with, cause of these little kids.
So the next question on that. If we ask them, ask the applicant to, ask, I'm trying to think of how to word this properly. How to, the applicant to ask D O T if their recommendations on signage approaching it.
We already put that in.
No, you haven't.
We haven't? Oh, okay.
We talked about, said that it was gonna come up in here. And that can either go in here, or it can go under additional, no, it wouldn't go under additional improvement. It, this is where it would go. But something.
Come up with some language. The applicant will be required to correspond with M D O T about the.
Oh, maybe we did already.
We already put that in.
Yes.
Yes, I know we did.
Yeah, it's, uh, we put it in.
Just right on number five under traffic.
Yeah, I know, we.
Okay, I, I remember we took out a waiting.
Yep, got it.
Okay, so that's in there, so no contact, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So how about the rest of page five? Additional improvements we don't have done yet. Uh, is that where the fence comes? No, that's where it comes.
Now, so, uh, met, no additional improvements under the standard.
Yeah.
I opened the window.
Still hot in here.
Oh, I feel it currently. I must've got cold.
Okay with that? Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, archaeological, historic.
Are we doing anything on additional?
No, we said don't put in a safe code.
No, no, no additional.
I would say number seventeen is met. The applicant shows on the plan, uh, the installation of a, up to, uh, a minimum ten-foot cedar fence. And that's on the, on the landscaping.
It's a big fence for a very windy day.
Luckily, it runs most of the time in the right direction. The wind works. Unparalleled.
Okay, everybody all right with that? Um, then we'll have pedestrians, parking and circulation.
Chain, was there, there was, there was a chain link fence going all the way around the property?
No.
Uh, nope, just around the stormwater pond.
The stormwater pond and the playground.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking, the playground. There is one round.
Should, should we have that fencing in there? Under number seventeen?
It's shown on the plan.
Did I call out chain link? Cause there may not actually be chain link around the playground.
I think so, they're trying to find.
It is.
And I don't, I guess, that's ten-year-old work stuff I'm talking, so don't.
So, it's.
I believe that's what John said.
It doesn't say it on C three one. I can't find the one that's on.
Read it, sign on.
No, one, two signs. See if there's one there.
What are you looking for now?
The, the chain link fence.
Well, there's, there's a, uh, on C two one, you have a, a, um, system legend, and so what is shown around the playground is fenced. It matches the fencing and.
There it says it.
Yeah.
New chain link fence.
Yeah, and around a retention pond or whatever we're calling that thing.
That was it.
So we're good with parking and circulation? Okay, how about page seven?
So we have to do some lighting.
Yeah. Exterior lighting has been met. All lighting should be downed, has been shielded.
But he did say that around the building, uh, that they, the plan does not show it necessarily meeting the one-point-five candle standard, so we have to put something in.
They need to add additional light on front of building?
Yes, will need to.
Oh, yeah.
In order to comply with one-point-five candle standard.
Additional. Are you okay with that, Courtney? Get. Everybody good with that?
Could you repeat that?
Somebody repeat that.
I have to add, uh, additional lighting on the front of the building to achieve the one-point-five foot candle.
Standard.
You know.
Okay. Um.
That's twenty-one, right? Eighty.
Lighting up partners. State fire marshal. Noise. Well, good, so the rest of page seven. So I do have a question, Courtney. Did this, a better say why she had a problem with the?
Probably just she probably.
She just said she had problems.
She has kids.
I, she hasn't been here in several years, um, so I, I, she didn't know that the property had been cut behind her.
Oh, okay.
She just didn't wanna listen to kids, I guess.
Oh.
Uh, she didn't have an actual standard on why.
Yeah.
Disapproved, she just said it was beautiful woods back there. And I said, it's been cut, and she was on the word.
Yeah.
Okay.
So page eight.
Not a capable white snout.
I directed her to Bing maps. Twenty. A little bit of excitement in my bed.
Odors. Wow. Now I.
What?
The right wind.
Cause just the four and five year, although, four and five-year-olds will be starting in there. We'll, we'll work on odors later.
So the pine kinda helps.
Yes, that's right. If it grows bad.
You're gonna go out and cuddle the watch every other day since it's a little bit of a pine.
And Mike Jodry, we have a letter from Mike Jodry. Okay, now on page eight, I'm continuing on, uh, commercial establishment. Is this redundant? Or this takes the project needs twenty-four parking space in this project, let twenty-five, okay. Trash is met. They'll have a dumpster. You're throwing me off with your blue ink on this, on these.
This is like, you almost have got the copy that came off my printer.
Oh, okay.
With a special copy.
Something special going on here, this. Uh, trash, anything else? Setback requirements, we know are all good.
And also?
All right, page nine, we've got.
Just number seven to deal with.
Requirements, yeah. Utilities is not done.
Because they are requesting waiver.
Utilities, I'm assuming that you're gonna have one, and is, should I?
Because they're not.
Oh, all right. Will be held up.
Okay, so.
Have because it's gonna work, yeah.
Okay. So waivers met, uh, app, waiver, well, on the front page of this, it says waivers requested, and I'm assuming here we have to say grant.
Well, you don't have to.
I don't know.
Oh, you're for. Well, yeah, you guys need to take a vote on if you wanna grant a waiver.
I will make a motion that we grant a waiver for the overhead, um, uh, utility connections on this project since it's setback substantially from the Route Two road.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
How about some discussion?
I wanna do a second for experiment.
If you, if you, how many other sites have we requested that they do exactly down the grounds?
Normally subdivisions all go underground because they like it, cause it's, they don't have any problems over again. It looks pretty.
But it's not our.
Doing this, are we setting a precedent? I'm sure I can think about it.
We've never.
We've never been asked for a waiver since I've been here in this.
We've never dictated this.
I mean, personally.
It's a huge, it's a huge expense.
Personally, I'd rather have them do that, but it is a huge expense. You have double, double lines, plus digging, run into the ledge, you go blast.
They, oftentimes, yeah, it's, it's a ledge situation.
But you gotta run, you gotta run through everything for it.
I don't have a clue to back it up, but I do know that fiber is being pulled out of the ground last I heard, cause it was getting hit by lightning. I don't know about power lines. I don't know about those.
Well, next time somebody comes and wants a waiver.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna do it.
Well, I mean, the circumstances are tight, put language in saying how far back the building is from Route Two.
Yeah, but some of your, I think, some of your subdivisions have quite a driveway.
Well, it's up to them.
Yeah, and a lot of them would like to have them under, cause they don't wanna look at poles.
Just as long as you are comfortable with setting a precedence, cause that's what you're doing. I've got one either way, but just make sure.
I mean, anybody can ask for a waiver on any piece of this, whether or not we've granted it, it's, and, and that's.
Well, you have to have substantial.
Well, it's just like street signs for not granting or granting it, so. It's just like the street sign, the stop sign. Subdivision puts a stop sign in, and it's standard, you enter a main road, you put a stop sign up at the intersection.
But it's not enforceable.
Nothing is.
Because it's on site property, and the county won't do it.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the, just on that one waiver?
Yeah.
Utilities. Oh, we've had a motion, we've had a second, all in favor?
Yeah, I guess.
And opposed?
Here, anyone opposed to this?
Yeah, I'm opposed. How are we gonna go underground?
Okay.
Or else there's one good tree and they're in the dark.
Yeah, I agree on that, especially.
Okay, all right.
Hold on a second.
Let's talk about that, if we've got some opposition here.
Is there a plan for generator on site?
I don't know that there is a generator on site.
So that, if there was a generator on site, I agree with, I'm okay with above ground. I agree with you guys on below ground. Go and put.
Not even my reasoning.
Seventy-five people in there. By the time you go in with employees and teachers and kids and everything, no, fifty-five.
I don't know what the policy is in Poligro.
I think it's more of an aesthetic issue than it is.
Well, it's that, but what happens if that goes out? I mean, the winds on that hill whip.
You gotta look at it, there's no tree.
But you're, no, there's trees, but the wind does whip through the.
So if you're gonna lose power, it's gonna be someplace other than right there.
Right.
You're losing it from the source.
Well, a generator, if there's a generator on site, it doesn't matter where you lose the power, whether it's.
I, I understand.
You can't make them put a generator in there.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying we make.
I mean, they will do whatever's required by the, the head start standards are very, very.
I just didn't know if they normally put generators in their.
You did state that all their facilities have above ground power, or several, not all, several?
In rural areas.
So, how are we feeling about this waiver? I mean, I know how Peter feels, Bob.
He voted yes.
I voted yes, but I, I think I'm gonna change that, because if you, you're setting a precedence, you're setting yourself up for future difficulties. You just are.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, I always would prefer to see power underground as well. I just, I guess I'm feeling.
It's forty-two, so you're, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy.
No, I, you have six.
How do you? How do you feel about it?
I'm, I'm both directions. I agree with, I agree with them, I, I understand the cost. And that's why I put it above.
How much cost is it?
It's, it's easily double.
But what, what's that?
Well, it used to be...
I mean, is it two thousand dollars instead of a thousand dollars or is it like?
It used to be...
Twenty thousand instead of ten thousand?
It's something like ten bucks a...
Open that up?
Well, it used to be, it used to be a hundred dollar pole.
No, that's all right, I got, I took...
When I put mine in, it was, it was a hundred dollar pole.
Yeah, but that was how long ago?
I know.
So we voted, guys. So Bob wants to change his vote.
Are we now revoting?
He wants to change two, four to two.
Well, I'm, I'm...
Okay, we'll make a decision.
Well, you gotta vote.
Well, I'm standing down.
The, the second piece with the overhead is they wanted to utilize the utility poles for lighting as well. So if we went underground, they'd have to have standalone light poles.
Yeah.
Adding a cost there as well.
Yeah, and then you gotta run power back down through it, but cosmetically and everything else, it's so much, it'd make that whole facility look really nice.
No one's gonna see it during the night.
Not supposed to be the time of my life.
Do you have a vote? What's your vote?
I'm, uh, I'm okay with it.
Okay, all right, so it's passed.
Passed, four to two.
All right. Thank you.
Sherry, I would like to see some language in the conditions that point us back to traffic and landscaping and screening, just so those are picked up.
Right.
To just see, see conditions.
And right away.
Yeah.
Right, so one at a time, what do, what do you guys want for the conditions of approval?
I was hoping to come up with what additional language. Additional requirements of the applicant are noted under the traffic standard and the landscaping and screening standard.
Okay. Can you, can we do that all as one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just additional notes under conditions of approval. Those are the only two on the webinar.
And we just create so we can see?
Are noted under landscaping.
And landscaping and screening.
I listed it in the beginning anyway, so I'll go back and...
So, we talked about wanting a condition in there the right away.
And the stop sign.
But there is a right of way. It's, but it's not...
What, what standard was it on that we put that language for stop sign?
Right, but I just missed it. It wasn't on the thing and I think I heard somebody say that it doesn't have to be on the plan, but if it's on the...
We can't sign the plan tonight if we ask for that.
What?
If we ask for that right of way to be on the plan.
No, I, I understand that.
And the easement is being shown on the plan.
If, if the plan stays the way that, what it is and we just have in there the condition that it's recorded the right of way.
But the right of way is on the site plan, I don't, I don't think...
And it's in the deed, I don't think it's necessary.
Cause this is the, ooh, Susan Donnig line.
Yeah, I know that, but...
So I don't think you need to know.
Somebody mentioned it and I wrote it down.
Okay, well, okay.
Well, it's in, it's, it's in the deed.
And it's on plan, so I think we're okay.
I think we're okay with it and I, I just don't wanna...
No.
I don't want another shade to have to come in.
We need approval for this, for the, uh...
Who do you make a motion?
I'll make a motion if we approve the, uh, findings of fact dated three, one, twenty twenty.
As amended.
For the, uh, for the who?
For the...
Community contest.
As amended.
Oh, yeah, as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Now the site plan itself?
Yep.
Site plan itself.
I'll make a motion to approve the second.
Yep, second.
All in favor? Okay.
So we can actually sign...
Shane has a big one.
Yep, I have a coming here.
You can put it right out of your desk, Shane.
Sure.
And then we can come around and sign it.
Yeah.
We all need to stick, we all need to stretch our lips.
When we're doing blue or black, I always get confused.
Is it blue at?
Legally, you're supposed to do black.
No, I think it's blue because it'd be...
It used to be blue for legal documents because...
I always thought that the, the black, it doesn't...
Shane, can I take my hat off?
Yes.
That was back in the old days.
It is my deed.
It used to be in the old days, he had to use blue, right?
Black is the official governmental color.
Yeah, but black can be photo copied, blue can't.
No, it can't, it's telling them that.
Black, black, one that...
Uh, I don't have a blue pen, which is what...
Oh, no, it's whatever you want us to sign with. Or just red.
I have a red, you're still on that one.
I have a black pen, you guys can just use black.
Okay. I won't try.
Oh, the erasable one, that's...
Okay, so new standard is, is recommended to use either black or blue.
Uh, they just don't keep the ten, but that's the only one that is really right, or the inspection sticker.
Sure, you have your online on the...
On the back they have a...
What?
Put your texture.
Sometimes, sometimes they do that.
Blue, blue or black, but black is preferred.
So you could purple?
We could.
Now, her meeting started at four fifteen.
It's gonna start early.
No, four thirty.
No, 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 I was here before you.
Hi. I'm reading my...
Yeah.
Yeah. We're just signing a site plan. It has to be raining, I forget what you were.
Now they're all black. Cause they just read it.
All right, and you can just couple down.
But black, if I have any...
Little break, we'll do something.
I know.
Hopefully I won't be sitting here and I can sit there when you come out.
Yeah, so where, you're living over there.
They have to sign two copies of your just one?
But I'm still wearing my old one until we hire someone.
Courtney, are we signing two copies of your just one?
Is there just one there? Just one, then I just signed one. I don't need a copy because they take up too much room in our file cabinets and they're all online now. So I just printed out a regular sized one and put it in there.
I was gonna photo copy that and send you out.
We're gonna give you a little one.
Did everybody sign it?
Yep.
And debauched, step off the line?
Well, she, three, four.
All right.
Shouldn't take long.
Shane, nice to see you again.
Yes, until next time.
You get scan amendments.
Hopefully it'll be warmer weather, a drier weather.
So it's kind of a questionable if it needs to go or not, but they are going to put...
Do you have something else?
Something commercial in there in apartments, I believe, is their plan, so they go up and come down.
Is this the building right now to...
Adults, family dollar. Yeah, so I feel like, I feel like why not just come and make sure you're all set so nobody...
Okay, I was just saying, you know, the dollar stories?
Take care, enjoy.
Thank you, everyone.
The doggy...
Justin Carter's daughter, goodbye.
Yeah, 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 yeah. His daughter was gonna go in and do a...
They did do dog grooming for a little while.
Did they?
Yeah.
And boy, that, that building took forever, very short.
Well, I have to sit down there, I can't, I just think that...
Yeah, renovated for like over five years.
We have such a casual meeting tonight. Okay, the next item on the agenda.
There's a staircase in the back of that.
Where'd Jim go?
He went back.
Uh, Courtney's gonna present this.
I'm just gonna heads up.
How many of them police called this time?
Why are they doing it?
You just told that New York Gazette estate.
Yeah, they're just, okay, Courtney's handling, Courtney's gonna present this. Um, this is just a minor modification. I mean, down the road, they might come to us with something, but for now it's just a minor, right?
Yeah, it's kind of questionable if they even have to come. I just figured that, um, I would present it so that all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. They probably will be here within the next couple of months because I think they're looking to develop potentially apartments or something there. Right now, they just need access to the second floor from exterior of the building. I have reached out to the Fire Marshal's office. They're not concerned about the project. It's going to be steps on the back up to a door. It's all going to match the current exterior of the building. And that's about it.
Here's another floor above where the grooming was?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a two-story house.
Maybe it's one and a half.
I think it's one and a half. No.
I agree.
It's one and a half.
Uh, it is a cape, so there is a...
Is there a dormer? No, there's no dormer.
No dormer, so it's one and a half.
It could be one point seven five.
Real estate standards, it is. I don't even care, all they know is they want a door on the exterior and it's going to affect the exterior of the building, therefore they need to come to you guys.
Okay, and it's in the back, right?
Yes.
Do we need to go through the whole finding of fact?
Um, you can scare through it vastly if you'd like, but you do, where it is a site plan amendment, I need to file a new finding of fact. Everything should be filled out if you just want to review it, we also need to find standing.
Standing.
Do you need help?
I'm all set.
All right.
So...
We have...
You wanna start with standing?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion if they have standing.
Second.
All in favor? And, uh...
Is there any questions about my project that I presented?
No.
Do we have the bottom application being complete?
Yeah, why are you when he lives here?
I, I, I...
Uh, because it's such a small amendment. I know Sarah actually used to do larger ones, but I feel like it is such a small thing, it was even questionable if that had to come. So I just, I'll just present it, it shouldn't be that, yes, Bob.
The reason why, and it's maybe not necessarily, but if, if we're doing the finding of fact and, you know, what about the Fire Marshal? What about, I mean, the fire chief, what about the financial?
We have all that.
You have, you have, I, I just... I didn't see all of it, but...
Oh, we don't, well...
I actually do have a fire chief letter. So these are those instances that there, it's more of, is it going to affect the standard or not? And I just have to guess on, I'll make that decision. Because like financial capacity, I put, it's, it's not going to affect...
It was, well done.
It's, it's a new owner and a new business, should become an asylum.
No, there's not a business. And if it is not a change of use that affects standards, it doesn't need to happen.
They're making apartments.
Unless the traffic would...
Apartments are not a doggy daycare.
They're, they're going to be coming when they open. They're not opening right now.
Okay.
But we've gone through this, if a business changes and traffic isn't going to change, the exterior of the building isn't gonna change, stormwater's not gonna change, lighting's not gonna change, it doesn't come to site plan. The way our code is written.
But with the addition on the back, it's happened.
This has to go because it's an exterior change.
Okay. I read through, I don't see anything that's...
There's a little typo.
No.
Oh, we're doing typo.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, as we, Courtney called me about this and we went back and forth and decided that it definitely, it should come, but...
Yeah, additional improvements.
It sounds like it hurts people to come.
Because down the road, I think they are doing something else, but they're not ready yet.
So we have to mark this, no addition.
I'm paying, what, no, I'm paying...
Thirteen to five.
Five.
You've got twenty.
Thirteen.
It's always best if you go place for...
Probably. We can get through it quick.
Yeah.
Additional improvements, not applicable or?
No, non-required.
Which one is that?
Additional improvement, she always leaves blank. And you found a blank one there.
I'm just looking at page, uh...
Three.
Page four, number twenty.
Subdivision application.
No, it, it's not marked, this is not a subdivision. That's what we say, N, N A, it's not a subdivision.
The reason is just, uh...
What page is that on, three or four?
That's four. Additional improvements is on five.
Yep, I got that.
I'm actually writing my next sentence, we approved the finding of fact.
I'll second that.
For, um, forty, what is it, forty-four million...
B and P properties.
Yeah, forty-four million.
I'll second that.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Or do you wanna discuss it?
Page is that on, Jim?
Page six.
Page six.
You know, if that would go up, if you don't have a, you just gotta put it up.
I can put only one principal use.
I did it myself.
So we voted or just made?
First and second, Jim still wrote.
Seven, twenty-six, you have the letter. Page seven.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, so fire chief Matt Reason, C, Leonard, dated March twenty-first.
All right, are we ready to vote?
I'll give a first and a second.
Yep. Ready? Great.
Bob was first.
Do we have to sign something? Um, we have to sign that little thing?
You mean that little, little pad, right?
Yeah, I, I'll just sign that, it's fine, I'll just keep it in the file.
All right, all right.
That's fine.
Arthur, tell him.
Well, let's do that.
Uh, while we are in the midst of doing that, um, I don't believe we will have a meeting April tenth. I don't have anything new that's come in.
And the deadline is when?
Uh, I don't know. I will be on vacation the following week, well, I'll be on vacation. I'm going on a science-based trip to Florida with twenty-five middle schoolers. I don't, I do not know how much of a vacation it will be, but I'll be in Florida, so...
It'll be hot.
So if you need anything, I will have my email, but I may not respond.
So April tenth is nothing?
Bring a lot of sunscreen.
Yeah.
April tenth is nothing?
My dad lives in Fort Myers, so we're going to the Keys though.
That's where we're going.
We're, we're... I have not been to the Keys since I was like sixteen, so I'm excited. And my son has never been.
We knew it.
And we're doing like the Turtle Hospital and like adulting thing.
No, they have great butterfly things down there too.
We're snorkeling. I'm excited, I think it'll be...
Oh, yeah.
It's very great.
They have that?
Oh, yeah, but we're sleeping a little ago, but...
Well, you're signing, that's bad.[1627.65]
No, I'm trying to get dates and you're talking about vacation.
Okay. April tenth, we're not meeting.
Okay, that's why I'm trying to find, April tenth and.
That's all she said, and then look at the.
The restaurant here, too, they're on the agenda.
The restaurant.
Okay, as far as I know, I mean, I'll.
Okay, that's, that's fun.
It depends, okay.
Okay.
So, um, under other business, while we have, it's a good night to talk about the appeals issue because we, only Sarah's here without. It was a little awkward last week, yeah, it is good for her to hear it.
Do you have that on?
Yes, it is.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, we just take a few minutes, um, Courtney, we have some, all the appeals process printed out, if anyone wants to look at the rules of procedures.
I also have my, my planning board manual, which also is the appeals board manual.
Oh, okay.
You guys have the same manual.
Yeah, it just seems to be a lot of, um, confusion, I'm gonna give you my two cents worth, um, we agonized over months over two and a half stories. And we, uh, we went to, it went to appeals, we, we voted the project down based on two and a half stories and that Mike Jodi did not, you know, wish for the project to go through. Uh, I don't think it's just thirty-five feet, I think he was uncomfortable, tell me if I'm right, Jim, uh, Mike Jodi was uncomfortable with the density that it would create with three full floors and what our capabilities are. Anyway, we voted it down, they chose to go to appeals, um, with the project, appeals, because now we can watch it on video. So we're watching this, they hemmed and hawed, three of them were there, they had a quorum, their chair was out, um, a guy, one of the appeals board members chaired it, that's never chaired.
He chaired boards, just not that board.
But never had chaired it, I know Jeff, and he's, he's a good guy, and they seemed, it felt like they, they never cracked open their codebooks. They went, oh, and their lawyer, they just believed everything the lawyer said, and they overturned our decision. Um, after our months of working on this, twice we worked on this project, so it was pretty, everyone was pretty frustrated and sort of, sort of angry, um. And, and they also, the part that I think irritated me was, there was so much new information, that as my understanding, they cannot give new information.
Correct.
Right, so, but, I mean, I don't know, it was salesy.
It wasn't pertinent to the decision, it wasn't, I don't think that it was. Like the AARP stuff, it, it very well could be in the file, I wasn't gonna go pull the file, because that's not pertinent to their decision if AARP gave funds for infrastructure.
Yeah, it was just weird, so it was, it was just a frustrating situation, and it's funny, I read the MMA's, um, appeals board process. And they said something that was really interesting to me, we've always been sort of discouraged about going to appeals board meetings, MMA said you absolutely should be at every one. And that was, that was an eye-opener for me, and I intend in the future.
Jim was there.
Yeah, Jim, yeah, but he's just always at meetings, so no one would have said, I think if we had all shown up, it would have been.
That one, that one we should have done.
No, I think you're right, and I think you were right to go, I didn't want to go because I didn't want to do, you know, because we had been discouraged.
I was told I couldn't.
We had been discouraged from doing it.
Over the years, yes.
I was gonna say, I have never told somebody they could not.
No, you never have, no, it was never from you.
No, but you didn't come for you.
But we've always been told, well, you can't talk, so why, why do you want to show up?
Which technically, you would have to have approval from the board to talk, yes?
Yes. You have, you.
But they might ask us questions.
Yes, but you can talk as a, as a citizen.
You still have to get permission.
But yes, you have to have permission from their board.
You have to have permission.
And that's, that's all fine, I think it would have been interesting, there was just a level of frustration with it, um, you know, our, I got the sense our town manager just wants it to go away, because the next thing that would happen, we would have been sued. And we wouldn't have won because of our poorly-written ordinance, once again, it always comes back to that. So, we would like to have that ordinance book rewritten, I know Natalie had ordered that rewritten.
I think it's in process right now.
I can give you the full scoop on what's happening right now.
Is it? Is it?
Michelle was.
Is it happening?
So, right now, the book itself has been cleaned up and is proposed for public hearing on the first.
Yeah.
On the first, to go on this year's warrant, there is an ordinance that is written, that has been approved by, approved and gone to public hearing, and is going to be on this year's warrant for, currently. Three important things that affect us. Uh, one being the two and a half story definition, one being the entire cannabis ordinance is written to be tossed out and condensed to six pages.
That's good.
Um, I don't care about that, and then there's, um, that part you don't care about.
And the two and a half stories has not gone to public meeting, I.
No, that goes, that goes unable first.
Like, that's a, so that's not on the warrant, yeah, it has to go to public.
So what was the ordinance review committee take on it?
Uh, we rewrote it to.
Based on another community's.
You had a definition.
Do you have it right there?
It's from the American legal.
American legal, we pulled, we, we did a lot of research.
It's the one I pulled very beginning.
And with different stuff, and that has already stood up in court for multiple towns, Ohio.
So it's a definition perhaps?
It's a half-story definition.
Discusses the knee wall, the height of the knee wall can't be over.
Three, three feet.
And there's a lot of, uh, some people felt that, uh, just leaving it at the thirty-five feet was the way to go, and not worry about the two and a half. Um, but some people felt that it was the wish of the voters and the residences to keep that New England feel, which brought us to the two and a half stories. Uh, we all knew what two and a half stories meant in that order, but we didn't, could not describe it. You know, we all pictured all the New Englanders, right, in town, and then suddenly they'll finish off that top floor and put in a bedroom, that's two and a half stories, but they wanted, the townspeople always wanted that feel to stay, so, anyway, um, so.
Thing that concerned me, okay, so.
I've got a few questions, yes, I agree with the two and a half story, and I think we did have a definition, it wasn't in here.
Right, right, we got it now, though, okay, so.
It actually was there, it just wasn't spelled out specifically.
Right, and that's where.
Spelled out in the one story, and if you go under the one story definition.
Yeah.
Everything that was there.
I think I called you and I found that, but I said, oh my God, it's right here all the time.
Is, and. Legitimate story.
But it still did not really spell it out, and I still think we would have been sued.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, what I want to know, so we are, you think the codebook is definitely being updated?
So the cookbook, the cookbook is being updated.
Finally, perfect.
No.
And it's being cleaned up, uh, Michelle.
And Jessica.
Jessica and, um, Sharon have been working on it, they, they've cleaned a lot of stuff up, there's actually. Oh, I got the notes on.
That's fair, that's alright.
Doesn't matter, but it is being cleaned up, a lot of it is in the language, um.
Is it gonna be reviewed by an attorney?
It has actually been reviewed by the, yes, it's been do, it's been reviewed, it's finishing up being reviewed by the attorney right now, because there was a couple of things that had to go back.
So, there seem to be some mix-up as to whether we can approach MMA ourselves, or if we have to go through the town?
You have to go through.
You have to go through the town, I, I need permission to contact MMA.
And it's, and it's a specific person in the town.
Yeah, so the reasoning behind this is that MMA is part of several main towns, Maine continues to grow, there continues to be more issues. So if they approved every town and every member on a board of a town to start contacting MMA's lawyers.
I get it.
They, they already are swamped, they would be so swamped, and you never know, you may have the same question as Jim, and the same question as Peter, and the same question as Laurie, and all of you are humiliating them.
I'm not arguing it, I'm not arguing it at all.
So, no, I'm just giving you a reason on why.
We just did a pass who told to go to them.
No, no, so, you can put in a request, don't, it's just, no, you can put in a request, and the town manager could approve or deny that request.
Now, you're saying.
I put it in in no time, a few hours, I put that request in, it came right back.
So, there is stuff, yes, you can go on the site.
Yeah, you can.
Any one of us can get in it, can get a login, we can get on the site, we can look stuff up, the legal.
Go on the site. Yeah.
The legal.
Right.
The legal portion of asking.
Yes.
The, the lawyer, their lawyer-specific things.
Oh, we had no intention.
So, but yes, any one of us can have a, have an access code, you just get on the site, say who you are, what board you are, and.
Yeah, you can look at whatever they've got on their site.
Anyone approves that, Sarah?
Actually.
Who approves it at the town level? So I went into MMA, I signed up, they said.
I believe MMA approves that, I don't think that now does.
MMA approves going in, do stuff.
A lot. Oh, okay.
The lawyer side.
Yes.
Whoever, there's one person per board, and then, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Is it on the board?
No, I did.
Originally talking about one person per board, then it went to Sharon.
I did Sharon have to approve it. I, I can't contact MMA without town manager.
Okay. Can I finish my question?
Yes.
What I was saying is, we've always been told to go to MMA, now we're told not to, who do we go to, I didn't get to finish that part, it's like.
For. For what specifically?
Do we go through Sherry if we have a question that needs to go to the legal?
To go to the.
The department that we're not supposed to talk to, whatever department it is.
To go to legal, you cannot talk amongst each other, you should go to Sharon, and tell Sharon, I want to reach out to MMA legal because of your state.
That's what you, okay, that is exactly what I was looking for right there.
But you can. For me, I wanted that resources in MMA.
Yes.
I understand that, all I wanted to know was who we talked to if we needed to, if we were confused and wanted further clarification from MMA, that's all I was trying to ask you, I kept.
That was the end of my question, I didn't get to.
My whole thing on this was, I was disappointed when I read the rules of procedures for the Board of Appeals, which to me, the language suggested they could do a whole new review. And I do not think that's appropriate, when you have a board like ours that has considered.
Worked hard.
The application, worked hard to make all the facts are, there should be a review of the record, I don't, I did not know.
Uh, our code states that they are reviewing the record.
No.
Unless they request to do a whole new one.
They, they.
Which would be, they would have to find that your record was incomplete.
Well, that they didn't conduct their hearing properly then.
If I, if.
Yeah, so let me finish, I mean, the language as I read it indicates that they can accept information from applicants, they were not just reviewing the record. I would like to make a request to the select persons, that those procedures be redone by an attorney, so it is just a review of our record. What's the point of the work we're doing if they can go in and hold their own hearing?
I, I believe, and I think I remember reading this, because I looked into that, I believe that comes from the state side.
No, it does not.
I could be wrong.
You can choose.
The man, you can choose, a town can choose to either have a de novo review or a record review.
Right.
And we have a foot in both.
Uh, I believe we're in the de novo.
De novo, the way that was handled.
What does that mean?
De novo means start afresh, new.
Okay.
And I think it merits work by, um, whoever has to, um, make a request, um, that it's not right.
I mean, I should have asked Sharon if we can reach out to the lawyer and ask why it's like that, I would, I would guess that there is a reason, but we review the record, or, sorry, the appeals, the town of Bethel. Has different reviews for different, like if I, if somebody questioned as a co-enforcement officer, if I denied an application, they could go and present it differently, but I believe, and I'm not sure.
Your, your decisions are not appealable to the Board of Appeals.
Yes, they are.
I think they are, that's what I read.
Mine, yes, they are, yes.
Isn't it, are they?
Oh, one hundred percent.
Yeah, I thought it was just.
I can't just make a decision and that's the end all.
It's just code enforcement officer and planning board, though, right?
Yeah, that's what I read.
Correct, okay.
But, I, I just.
But I, I believe that typically they would, I mean, I have done research on appeals when I first started, I don't think that they've ever done one where they held their own hearings, I think the purpose is there. Because if they get something and our recorder didn't record, or they found that our record was incomplete, I think that is the purpose of their ability.
The way the attorney wrote up the decisions, you never know it's a record review.
Well, but, as far as.
Sitting here.
Maybe the attorney gets it.
No way, he re-presented the whole discussion and case and what they found and all that, all I'm saying is, this is not right, it should be clarified.
Am I saying something I shouldn't?
And if they were supposed to be doing a record review, then their whole hearing was not correct.
I would agree.
Yeah.
My new evidence was presented where that would have affected the decision, not part of AARP grants.
No.
Or the train station.
And we keep talking about precedent tonight.
They should have actually entertained the presentation, they should have first said, have, have you all read the minutes, have you all listened to the tape? They didn't even need any new information if it's a record review.
We have always had people presenting, I, I don't see where.
I, I'm questioning the whole thing.
That doesn't mean it's right.
It acts like a whole new hearing and a whole new decision, it needs to be re-looked at completely, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I agree, but I believe that it says what they can.
I agree, and I think we're setting a precedent by letting it happen and not saying anything, because then the next person that comes along could really bring in a lot of new information and could be.
There's no need.
If it was pertinent to the decision, it would have been stopped, I would have stopped it, the lawyer would have stopped it, unfortunately, you can't use the same lawyer that was at planning board.
I know, and I think that.
Yeah.
That lawyer, I don't think Jim did much for us at the meeting either with the two and a half stories, he couldn't define it. He, I love Jim Katz, he's, I just don't think that, I think that was kind of a waste of money.
So, I, I would like to, Madam Chair, to make a motion to see if the board would support this, to request the Board of Selectmen re-look at the Board of Appeals procedures. To determine if it is a case where they can conduct a hearing de novo, or they only are doing a record review.
Um, do we not want to have me reach out to the lawyer and ask why those were originally there?
You can still ask, but I think that I agree with Lori.
Well, I'm not gonna spend the extra effort.
I agree with Lori, I'll second that.
De novo versus.
Well, we can appeal it, if you want, yeah, we can actually.
No, I think, and to me, it's.
Because you can take it to spare it back to the very.
I, I know, but I.
I was so mad right after that, I think I got Courtney and Sharon worked up, I said, I want this or go to court.
I want the process to be the way that I feel it is right.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm getting at, and we sit here and we get told, well, Sarah did it this way, so it's fine, that doesn't mean it was right. Just because somebody previous did something a certain way, doesn't mean it's the proper way to do it, and we need, I mean, I, I don't write, I don't get on social media, but some of the stuff, once in a while, they'll end up getting caught in some of the stuff that's written, I mean, people are slighting us.
The planning board?
Huh? And the whole, the, the whole thing.
So.
So, if we do things properly.
Yeah, I don't either, because of that.
If we do things properly, that's the only thing I go on, unless somebody points something out for me to look at, but, and I sure as heck am going to take those things.
Well, I did.
But if we, if we do things properly, doesn't matter what they were done in the past, and things have changed since they were, may have been right thirty years ago, but that doesn't make them right now.
I mean, it definitely says the Board of Appeals can allow the parties to present their position.
I know, because it's written like it's a de novo hearing, that's what I'm taking away from, the reason I get on this.
It says the parties to present their positions, but they didn't.
Appellate's the review, right?
Well, so it's, it's actually, it's actually both ways, because the next line says, they shall review the records of the proceedings before the, before the planning board.
I just don't think it's properly written, I was told it was a, um, record review, and I think it's written in a way that allows them to go ahead and almost rehear the whole case, and I don't think that's right.
Actually, what you're trying to say is you would like to have O R C look at what's going on and perhaps clarify.
Well, I'm asking the select force.
The select force has to decide it.
The select board would approve it, so you're, so you're not asking the select board, because it's not really their privy to look at the ordinance, you're requesting the select board to approve to go to O R C.
And I think it needs to be done by.
You can go directly to O R C.
So, so.
But it needs a journey to.
Well, everything, yes, goes to the attorney.
But that form.
Yes, they would have.
But whatever the process is, I want it, I would like.
So, I, I want to clarify something on that, because I understand what you're saying in both directions, it should go to O R, but what is currently happening is, when somebody wants something, doesn't matter who it is, wants something. They go to the select board and say, we want O R to look at this, technically, select board is supposed to just say, okay, and pass it on to us. Not make a decision, oh, we don't feel like we want them to look at something, so, no matter, no matter who it is, it's supposed to go through that field and come to us. And then it goes the rest of the loop to the, to the turning into the, to the select board, so what is also happening currently is, stuff is getting, the select board is getting, deciding, not the whole board. Is doing things on their own and bypassing the whole procedure, so if you spell it out.
That's what, I wanted to go to the select board, because that's where it starts, they can decide if it's going to O R C or somewhere else or whatever, I don't know where it properly belongs, because it's highly legal. Highly legal of that, or not the state law.
So, so, if it can, if it comes, it, it, definitely, it should come to O R, it should go to O R. If O R gets handed something, and we look at it and go, whoa, this is very confusing to us, this is beyond ours, I'm going to Sharon and saying.
Get legal.
This needs to go to legal, because we don't understand it enough to make a decision, so.
I'm curious, has anybody watched any previous appeal or listened to previous appeals besides this one?
I looked, I went back and tried to find something, didn't find it.
I was.
I couldn't find anything.
There was one last fall regarding a select board decision, I'm just curious if anybody else has.
You know, I can't find all the old, um.
I can't even find.
Agendas to try to go through and see it.
They're buried.
Go to Seymour.
Yeah, they're.
To where?
They're buried under, under the more.
Just go to the more, to Seymour, but if you go to what TV and you just type in appeals.
Sarah, did you want to say something else about the process?
Okay.
You look like.
Oh, I, I, there, there's a form now that you put up, like, so I think you all can directly fill it out, and then.
Yeah, yeah, it's. It's right here.
Well, I, we don't, we only can fill it out if the board is a whole library, otherwise I'll be filling it out for myself.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, right now, the motion on the table is to have select board re-look at appeals de novo versus administrative.
So you can.
So do you want to have selectmen refer that to O R C, or, I mean, they're gonna look at it, what do you want them to do with it?
No, no. To, I believe it should be, um, uh, you know, the appellate review, I was told it was, it doesn't read that way, to me.
That's what, since we have, I have been on this board, I've been told it was an appellate review, and not a de novo, and that's.
Administrative versus de novo.
Yeah, okay.
Well, okay, but still, and every. Well, okay, but still, and every.
It's only the person filing.
We have always been told only the attorneys and only the appeals board will be talking, not one other person. And it's like, when that started happening, I'm like, that's not what we've been told for the last six years. So I was highly confused and frustrated.
So, are we gonna vote?
So we could. Are we ready to vote? I think we have a first and a second.
Be a little more specific, cause I mean, they can look at it and then.
No, I mean, I, I, that they should look at it was the, um, we, that we were told. I, I guess I would say that the planning board believes, maybe this won't pass, that it should be an administrative appeal. And the process reads like they can conduct a whole new hearing. And so it's not, in my mind, correct.
I feel like it just pits the two boards against each other in a very bad way.
It does.
So, what, what is the wording here? Do we want clarification?
We want them to determine if it's written as, as administrative or.
Laura, yeah? Did I write the sheet for you guys? And then I'll just have you sign up. Cause then I can, I'm gonna take it, and I'm gonna photocopy it, and I'm gonna use this as my motion.
First we need to vote.
Well, you need to do your, your, yeah, believe should be administrative, not.
We have a first, we have a second.
Hold on, should be administrative, not de novo.
And that the procedures are not written to make that clear.
So, procedures.
And it's important that this one goes to legal.
Oh, yeah, every, everything has to go to legal before it goes back to, after we get done with something.
We have a second, second, I made the motion.
I, I, I said it as she.
Sure, first. Okay, just second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Okay.
So.
I was kinda curious from the, the guys down here. I mean, did you, were you frustrated with this situation or not?
Yeah, I gotta.
If you've been on any other board that, that has that type of venue where they can go to, um, an appeals board. Or if you've been on an appeals board where they can take your appeal and then go to Superior Court, it's nothing new. I mean, I'm, I've been down on, in Oxford on a board and. And once in a while, we get one handed back to us and from, from Superior Court.
Yeah.
I can tell you that the lawyer actually was on the appeals board of Portland. I mean, he, he's well versed in appeals rules and procedures.
And they, they just live on the federal level.
It happens. But the Board of Select meeting on.
But we were like, I guess.
I really, I didn't hear, I don't know anything about what happened in the appeals meeting.
Oh, okay.
I, I didn't know, I just didn't, I was like.
I mean.
And then, and then they appealed, and they appealed. I mean, there's gonna be a difference of opinion here. I mean, and so, and I don't know the ins and outs of the appeals board, but.
Yeah, I know.
They made the decision they made because of what they thought was the right thing to do, and that's how it comes out.
But that's not.
I think what, I thought what really bothered me with that, with that tape, with that watching it on YouTube, was then they said, oh yeah, the planning board aired. And that put me over the edge.
Can I let you know that every finding of facts conclusions from any appeals board has said aired?
Yeah.
That is not a new thing.
I know it's not a new thing, but it was like after working so hard on this.
But I also, I feel like they should be stated, just cause I feel like it's been thrown around. The people on the appeals board are not new to appeals, right? And what you see in a video.
Yeah, the chair is, Gordy.
No, he's been on several boards before.
He's new to.
He's in appeals boards?
On appeals boards?
And he's helping appeals, and he's never been, he's never chaired it. He's been sat right here and said it.
He's never chaired appeals, but they're, they're experienced professional people. They're, I mean, we didn't just pull them off the street, and they've never sat in a appeals board meeting. But I wanna make it clear that like, what, what you see in the meeting, I mean, they get our tapes. They've watched the planning board meeting, they've listened. They come in and get a thumb drive of the meetings, um.
And they did, they did for that whole project.
I can tell you that they have spoken with the lawyer on occasion that week about procedures, that Jeff reached out to the lawyer. It wasn't. So I feel like it, I mean, the, the videos are great. I think it's, I mean, I've watched select board meetings, and it's wonderful to stay in touch in school board meetings. But it doesn't show the whole process, so I feel like when you're watching it, you think, oh, they just walked in and made a decision on the whim, and they didn't open their codebooks. The codebooks were open that week, appeals board manuals were open that week, lawyers were contacted about procedures. So I feel like the, the video kind of misconstrued the process. Like you need to realize that there's a before process before the meeting.
I really wish they had said aired, because they didn't say aired. They said things much more derogatory by us than that. It was.
You know, I, twenty years ago, when I was on the planning, all weeks on the appeals, we got the packet, and we went through the packet.
Okay, so we need to fill this out yet before you guys can.
Did they present new evidence?
Yes.
So.
It wasn't pertinent to the decision.
I do, I don't agree with that.
No, I don't agree with that either.
And it potentially wasn't new evidence.
We got this AARP designation. I didn't go through the files to see if they had AARP funds, cause I didn't know they were gonna. It's not funds, it's just, I think it's just a designation. It was something.
It doesn't matter, you can sit here and say that it didn't affect it. People on the motion to adjourn.
Well, I.
People on the board.
So.
She's gonna write this.
This says the name and location of ordinance, so is this the one forty dash ten?
She's writing this.
All right, let's not talk while she's doing it. Let her write her thing.
Okay. Right.
What's one forty dash ten?
It says, location of ordinance and code book. Is that this one forty dash ten that I sent you off?
Yes, well, it's a rules of procedure for this.
Well, they don't review the rules of procedure.
Who doesn't?
The appeals board reviews them. They go to a lawyer, they make changes, and then they would go to the select board for approval. So the whole motion then should be amended, and appeals board would re, you, you review your own rules. We did it last year.
But I want, I want the selectmen to be aware of this issue.
The select board reviews them last, so it would go to appeals, and then it would go to a lawyer.
I think it's helpful. This is just why I made it that way, for the select board to ask the Board of Appeals if they believe. I mean, I, they're the governing body and they.
We do ask the ORC, so.
Yeah, that's how I feel.
Okay, Bosley, we add you to motion to adjourn.
Well, no, we haven't figured this out.
I know, no, I, my, our motion is that if this request goes to the selectmen, explaining the.
But that's not the proper procedure.
But then they can correct it.
They're not going to. They are gonna toss it.
No, it goes, it has to go, when you guys went over your rules of procedure, in any board assessors, appeals, planning, it needs to go to that board. They have a workshop. They make changes or don't make changes.
I think they should be directed by the Board of Selectmen.
And then goes to the lawyer, and then it goes to select board.
I think they should be directed by the Board of Selectmen to do it because of the problem.
I may have to clear this with Sharon, cause I, I, I just don't, I don't wanna say it should go, and then we're not following procedure.
You have to do it in the proper procedure.
Well, you check with Sharon. I do not feel that in this, this is not a routine.
Okay, so I'm not filling this out, cause this is for ORC though.
Yeah.
And it's not going to ORC.
No.
Well, it's, it's a change in the code.
No, it's not a change.
We passed a motion, so we have to communicate it.
I thought you wanted to change the code.
I'm happy to do that.
I thought this was code. I thought that's, cause that's where it double tossed it.
That's not what she wants to change, that she wants to change your procedure.
Here you have a motion and a second.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Thank you.
I will go to the next select board meeting based on this motion, if that's okay, and explain what we're asking.
I don't, it probably won't, I don't know if it'll make next Wednesday, the May twenty seventh.
Oh, she can, she can do one, she can do a public, she can do a.
On public comment, yeah, yeah, you could do that.
And that next meeting is Wednesday?
The first.
The fourth?
Yeah.
Next Wednesday.
Third.
Third, I don't, I don't have my phone.
I don't even have one.
It's next Wednesday. I think it's the third.
The third.
Is it the third?
The fourth is Thursday.
Okay.
What motion did we?
The third.
What are we doing?
Okay, can we vote on adjourned?
I, I know.
That, I was wrong also on the public hearing with the rest, the last of the stuff that's gonna be changed is on Monday.
The first, that's what you said.
Yes.
So, if we have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? All in favor?
Okay, so we're not filling that, uh, or he's gonna go to the board. Okay, perfect. So I don't need to do anything.
Yeah, another thing on that public hearing is the LB.
Yeah.